Welcome to a special Lawrence City Council meeting. Good evening and welcome to a special Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 8th, 2016. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel DePena.
Present.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Present.
Counsel Abdu.
Present.
Counsel Almonte.
Present.
Counsel Maldonado. Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez. Noted Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Present.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Present.
What is it?
I don't want people to think that Counsel Alvarez is being irresponsible by not being here tonight. Counsel Alvarez has been in the hospital. She was, she had surgery and the surgery didn't go well. And she had to go back into the hospital. I visited her today. She's doing better. But obviously, I want people to know that she's not here because of health reasons. So I don't want people to judge her thinking that she's being irresponsible by not being here tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Maldonado. We wish her well and hope that her health improves very soon. Please rise for a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that this is a special council meeting for the fiscal year 2017 Budget Appropriation Order that was submitted by Mayor Dan Rivera. Before we start, I just wanted to say thank you to Counselor Vice President Mark LaPlante, who's the Chairperson for the Budget and Finance Committee, and each member of the Budget and Finance Committee, including Counselor Dave Abdu and Counselor Brian DePena. I also want to thank Mr. Iannello, who's our Finance Director, for putting this budget together. It is a lot of work. So thank you, Mr. Iannello. At the same time, I want to thank each and every one of the department heads that were here. But in order for that to happen, we also have to thank our mayor, who asked for their presence to, for each one of those hearings. Thank you, Mayor Rivera, for submitting a budget on time and balanced. Mr. Vice President, you have a committee report to present.
Thank you very much for the compliment. Mr. President, I echo your comments as well. The Budget and Finance Committee voted a unanimous vote to send this budget document up to the full council without a recommendation.
Is there a form of motion?
In the form of a motion.
Is there a second to accept the committee report?
Second.
Motion has been made on second to accept a committee report. Any discussion? Since there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 175-16, FY 2017 Budget Appropriation Order, placed on the agenda by Daniel Rivera, our mayor. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice for the public hearing.
Document 175-2016. Notice is here by giving the city council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 8th, 2016, in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony for the consideration of the approval of 2017 fiscal year operating budget for the city of Lawrence within an estimate, with an estimated $280,000,013,27. As follows. The appropriation order for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, was posted in the notice, providing for a general fund of the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget with all departments and allocations listed, totaling the amount just stated, $280,000,0327. A copy of the proposed 2017 fiscal year budget for the city of Lawrence was made available for viewing, copying, and inspection by the public in the office of City Clerk, 200 Common Street, between the hours of 8:30 AM and 4:30 PM. A complete copy of the proposed fiscal year budget was also posted and available for viewing and printing in the city of Lawrence website. And the website address was posted in the advertisement as placed in both the news media, print media of Rumble, the Eagle Tribune. Persons wishing to be heard on the matter were, shall be offered the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. President, Dan Rivera, Mayor of the city of Lawrence, 12 Jefferson Street. I come before you today to ask you to vote to support the budget proposal as submitted. As you will see, as if you've seen in the last month, you guys have been working on this. The budget is basically a zero or a flat budget with very small exceptions in the budget. I'll go through some of them now. But out of 81, out of all the lines in the budget, 81% of them are either zero compared to last year, or less compared to last year. So very few places that we decided to prioritize some money in, you're going to see some increases in that. And I think that you saw that when you spoke to the department heads and when the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee asked them if they wanted other stuff, that they definitely did need other things. They definitely did want other things. But we started, like we start every budget process, we say, you're going to just put a zero increase budget on the thing, and we start from there. The only issue is that, because we have these collective bargaining agreements, every year, there are things that go up anyway. So there were some fixed costs, and we talked about those fixed costs. There are fixed costs in personnel. There's fixed costs in utilities, fixed costs in garbage disposal, those things, public safety, fixed costs. And there are fixed costs in things like the trash removal and things of that nature. And that will go up every year regardless. And so those are places you're going to see increases in. I will remind you that we do have, the budget in front of you is balanced. It's the seventh year in a row that we've done this. We did balance the budget without raising the 2.5% increase on the taxes. We only did 1.6. Primarily, we did that because we heard the voices of the council. They said, hey, we think that it's going to be an issue. We don't want to raise 2.5%. We heard you. And we, you know, counsel, myself and the Director of Finance, Mark Iannello, again, at the, against some pushing from the overseer, we decided to go only 1.6. They wanted us to do 2.5. A lot of things that we wanted in the budget that we ended up not doing. But we did do some stuff in there that the overseer wanted. I will tell you that our staff works incredibly hard. This is a bare bones budget. It does have five new positions in the police department, but it's eight actually new staff people in there. That'll make it 18 in the last three years. And that's really important because there's been a drop in crime, 17% over the last few years. We know that we wouldn't be able to do the walking beats on Broadway if we didn't have these staff people. The noise car that goes out every summer and makes sure that our streets are quiet. We wouldn't be able to do that without those positions. We have seven new firefighters, thanks to the SAFER grant, but that money is in this budget as well. All in all, we spent about $23.7 million in public safety. We do add a couple new positions. One of them, we have to add because we have a court case. They said that we're awful at the Americans with Disability Act. Awful. We lost a court case to that because we weren't doing what we're supposed to. And one of the things it says is you have to have a full-time ADA coordinator. We've been skating because in our ordinances, the coordinator for ADA has been the Director of Public Works, but that's not what the court said. The court said we have to hire somebody to be the ADA coordinator, and in this budget, we do that. The last thing, the last couple things I'll say is that we also add a homelessness coordinator. I don't think that anyone here can argue with the fact that we do have a homelessness issue. And we hope that, to start dealing with those in a real way. We try to add two new positions at the Bellevue Cemetery. Again, something that everyone here is very familiar with, that we need those positions to fix the way that they're running the cemetery. It doesn't lay anyone off, and it doesn't use one-time revenues. So even though we may have $5 million in reserve, in free cash as our reserves, we can't use that to run our business every, the state won't let us do it. So if I say, hey, let's take a million from there to pay for salaries, they wouldn't let us do it. So this budget is based on revenues that we expect to get in, and the revenues are conservative. The two things that we did that got us into trouble back before 2010, we spent too much and we overestimated our revenues. This budget does the opposite. We spend very little and it conserv, it underestimates our revenues. We think that's the recipe for success. I think that's why we've had three bumps in the, in our ratings with the, with the, with Wall Street that has helped us keep our debt service down. I hope that, we'll be here for questions, and I'll let the audience speak as well. But, you know, again, this is a budget that's bare bones. It does a very bare minimum. And we'd love to keep the streak of passing the budget on seven years in a row. I think it sends the right message to the state with the overseer. It sends the right message to the community that we're doing things that we're supposed to be. And lastly, it shows everyone that does business with the city that we have a process that works and we do it well. So thank you so much. Thanks again, Counsel LaPlante, for your committee's hard work. I understand that the staff was drilled and put through the ropes to make sure that they have everything right. And thank you, Counsel President, for putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak?
Bueno talde.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Frankie Caravaggio.
My name is Frankie Caravaggio.
Vengo a hablar basado a lo que está sucediendo aquí.
I am here to speak on behalf of what's happening here.
Estoy contento, los siete bomberos creo que se necesitan.
I'm happy with the seven firefighters. I think it's needed.
Porque si se hay un fuego, no queremos que nadie muera.
If there's a fire, we don't want anybody to die.
Pero hay tres puntos que quiero hablar, bien importantes.
Three points that I want to speak about that are very important.
Mr. Caravaggio.
Yo fui adicto por droga.
Mr. Caravaggio, will you mind giving us your address, please?
Tu dirección. Oh, 104 de la Hancock.
104 Hancock Street.
Thank you.
La policía, ustedes ya me conocen quién soy yo y qué es lo que yo hago en la comunidad.
La policía, the police, and you know who I am and what I do in the community?
Creo que necesitamos policía.
I think we need more police officers.
Sé que hay una situación crítica.
There's a critical situation.
Donde hay mucha posición en alta como muchos sargentos.
Where there's a lot of sergeants and top heavy.
Muchos dicen que no están haciendo trabajo, otros dicen que están haciendo trabajo.
Which some say they're working and some say they don't.
Pero eso tiene que ver ustedes con la unión de la policía, no con nosotros.
But that's something that you have to address with the unions, not with us.
Yo creo que necesitamos policía.
I think we need police officers.
Mientras más policía, menos criminalidad.
More police officers, less crime.
Lo hablo de experiencia propia.
I speak from experience.
Que fui un criminal en un tiempo.
I was a criminal at a time.
Y donde no había policía, era fácil hacer cualquier cosa.
Where there was no police officers, it was easy to do crime.
Okay, segundo.
Second.
La posición de homeless, de gente que está en la calle.
The position of homelessness.
Creo que muy importante.
Very important, I believe.
Es bueno llevar comida.
It's good to take food.
Y hablarle de Dios a la gente.
And to speak about God.
Pero el problema aquí no es la droga.
But the problem here is not drugs.
El problema aquí hay algo detrás de la droga.
It's behind the drugs.
Puede ser abuso físico.
It could be abuse.
Abuso emocional.
Emotional abuse.
Cosa que pasamos en el pasado.
Something that has happened to these people in the past.
Tengo muchos amigos que ahora vimos son adictos a droga.
I have a lot of friends that are addicted to drugs.
Porque los papás fueron adictos.
Because their parents were addicts.
Y cuando tuvieron relaciones con su esposa.
And when they had relationships with their wives.
Estaban en adicción.
And they were in addiction.
Y esos niños nacieron.
And those children were born.
Adictos a heroin.
Addicted to heroin.
Y es fácil ellos volver.
It's easy to return to that.
Se habla de experiencia propia, tengo una hija que es perativa.
I speak from experience. I have a daughter that's hyper.
Yo no, porque yo muy gustaba la cocaína.
Because I loved cocaine.
Entonces es un problema.
That's a problem.
Entonces necesitamos una persona que trabaje ocho horas diarias con esta gente.
We need someone that works eight hours a day with these people.
Que pueda conseguirle y ayudarlo.
That can help and find them there.
No solamente mandando un programa de droga.
Not just send them to a program about drugs.
Sino buscar la solución de por qué ellos llegaron a la droga.
But to find the solution as to why they're taking drugs.
Por eso yo creo que necesitan esa posición.
That's why I need that. I think they need that position.
Es muy importante.
It's very important.
Y la última es.
And the last one?
Análisis de presupuesto.
Budget analyst.
Okay, este, el código.
The code?
E 07024.
The code is 07024. I almost said it in Spanish.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Nivel cinco.
Level five.
Ustedes pueden buscarlo en la biblioteca.
You can find it in the library.
Qué es lo que significa esa posición.
What does that translate to?
Okay, elaborar este proyecto y proyecto de presupuesto, procesado, analizado, y evaluado información, al fin de garantizar una buena ejecución y distribución presupuestal.
Okay, I got a cheat note here. So I'm going to read it from here. Prepare the draft and draft budget processing, analyzing, and evaluating information to ensure proper execution of the budget and distribution.
Estuve hablando con una persona.
I was speaking to someone.
Donde dice que dentro de la escaldía.
That says inside city hall.
Hay tesoreros.
There's treasurers.
Hay posiciones que están haciendo eso.
There's other positions that are doing that.
Creo yo que hay un problema grande.
I believe that there is a big problem.
Creo que por no tener esta posición.
Because there is, that position's not there.
Hoy en día estamos aquí tratando de subirle los tases a las casas de la gente.
And that is why I believe that, that's why we are here trying to raise taxes.
Esta posición muy importante.
This position is very important.
En cualquier, toda la persona que están detrás de mí y lo que están ustedes a frente.
This is very important to the people that are behind me and the people that are in front of me.
Si usted tiene negocio.
If you have a business.
Usted sabe que usted tiene que tener una persona indicada para eso.
You know that you have to have a person that just focuses on that.
Que usted no gaste más de lo que está ganando.
That you don't spend more than what you're getting.
Porque se va a ir para bancarrota.
Because you're going to go to bank.
Si nosotros no hacemos nada ahora mismo in Lawrence.
If we don't do anything in Lawrence.
In 10 años, este pueblo no va a valer nada.
In 10 years, this city will be worthless.
Entonces, nosotros tenemos que empezar.
We have to start.
Necesitamos esta posición.
We need that position.
No estoy en ningún lado de ningún partido.
I am in no either side of any politician.
Estoy a favor de mi gente.
I'm in favor of the people.
Estoy pensando en los niños.
I'm thinking of the children.
No estoy pensando en esta gente que está detrás de mí.
I am not thinking about the people behind me.
Que ya son mayores de edad y saben lo que es bueno y malo.
That are older and know right from wrong.
Estoy pensando en mi hija y en los hijos de usted y en sus nietos.
I'm thinking about my daughter, their kids, your kids, and their grandchildren.
Que si usted no hace nada, la droga no incrimina a nadie.
If you don't do anything, drug doesn't discriminate.
Y si tú no me crees, veo que son blanquitos, que son casi todos ricos.
And if you don't believe me, go look for the white children that are rich.
Que están usando droga.
That are using drugs.
Muchos dominicanos.
A lot of Dominican.
Que antes era una falta de respeto, veo un dominicano usando droga.
That it was disrespectful to see a Dominican using drugs.
Bajo el puente, hay más de cinco.
Underneath the bridge, there's more than five.
Entonces, si nosotros no hacemos nada por este pueblo.
If we do nothing for this city.
Y ustedes son los que tienen que hacer algo.
And you're the ones that have to do anything.
Si yo tengo que dar mil pesos.
If I have to give a thousand dollars.
Al año.
A year.
Para que cuide a mi hija.
So that you can take care of my child.
Mil pesos no es nada.
A thousand dollars is nothing.
Entonces, vamos a levantar la cara.
Let's lift our faces.
Vamos a trabajar.
Let's work.
Uno por cien, uno punto seis no es nada.
1.6 is nothing.
Es de 10, de 100 pesos, un peso y medio.
For 10 dollars, it's a dollar and 6 cents.
Se me están quejando por trapos de dos pesos.
So we're arguing about a petty $2.
Que quizá lo votan en otras cosas.
That we throw away at other things.
Solamente quería decirles eso.
That's all I wanted to say.
Y Dios lo bendiga.
God bless you. And I was just translating.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Caravaggio. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Homayon Mali, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. Tonight, in this important hearing, we, the citizens, demand of you to bring to your attention the reason for budget is to improve quality of our life, our citizens. But this budget, as I refer you to examples and the numbers, that they don't lie, is not going to help to improve quality of life of our citizens. In the Mayor Rivera budget, there is not enough money to support for our police officers and our senior officers' union. In the Mayor Rivera budget, there is no support for our DPW worker and the hard-working union. In this budget, there is not enough support for our firefighters. Mayor Rivera, in this budget, appropriated more than $18 million for the water department. Water department, since Mayor Lantigo has changed the transformation of the Chairman of the Water Department, Commissioner Peña has resulted, Commissioner Peña is not in the office no more. If you go upstairs, water department is governed by two ladies working there that regularly shotting of citizens' water without notice. Instead, our police department, that they put their life on the line every day of the go, they only receive $12 million. Our firefighters, sacrificing their life, only receive $12 million. Our DPW only $8 million. We, the citizens, demand of you, review the budget that proposed by Mayor Rivera. And remember, the fundamental reason for budget is to improve the quality of life of our citizens, not to add to more cost for administrative salary increases. We demand of you to oppose Mayor Rivera budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Please identify yourself.
Good evening all. My name is Javier Negron. Live on 45 Union Street in Lawrence. Good evening, distinguished members of the council. This is President Kendrick Vasquez. I'm here tonight not representing any political groups or any political agenda or being influenced by any other reasons but what is right. Examining our budget and what you had in front of you and the decision and all, and all this matter that you have been working with Mayor Rivera, I find that there's, there's better chance to review before voting in favor. I'll tell you why. I'm from Puerto Rico, a commonwealth of the United States. Right now, it's not, nothing new for anybody that reads the newspaper or listens to the news, the situation and the financial crisis that Puerto Rico is going right now. We don't know what's going to happen in the next month. We're hoping that Congress will bail out the federal financial situation that we have. But we have a governor, a young attorney, Alejandro García Padilla. What he have done, only raising taxes, only bringing ideas for the American citizens that resides in Puerto Rico, only to punish and raise more taxes, that's not a smart solution. And that had brought to him 78% of rejection of the Puerto Rican people, and he cannot run for office, even in his first term. I'm saying to you, with all due respect and the mayor, it is not wise, it is not wise to solve and bring the problems into the pockets and the hard-earning money of our citizens of Lawrence. Lawrence per capita income is less than $17,000, if I checked last time the information. How can we keep bringing the budget and putting the burden in our residents and our taxpayers? I think there's work to do. There's got to be better solutions. There's got to be hard work to do with the council before taking a decision. Once again, with all due respect, I'm not here hiding any agenda or being influenced by no one. It's what I know, what I see. But we cannot keep continuing in the parade of Mayor Rivera of giving to him everything he wants. No, you have to think first of the citizens that that's why we put you right where you are. Good evening and with all respect, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Negron. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Please identify yourself.
Good evening, folks. My name's Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street. First, I'd like to thank the council president for initiating the process of allowing public input during the budget and finance hearings to hear us prior to this. That being said, I have found from past experience that attending those things and putting input in is a lost cause. You people don't listen. I have yet to see a suggestion from anybody, any citizen up here, that you people have acted upon. At least three of you, plus the mayor, know my concerns. You've listened to my rant and rave at the various public hearings involving the budget. You know what my concerns are for revenue enhancement and for cutting of expenses, elimination of stipends. That's a big pet peeve of mine. How can somebody get a stipend for doing extra work when they are being paid a good salary to do a full-time job as it is? Are they being overpaid for their first job? Or are the two jobs that they're being, doing now, are they going to be less than 100% jobs? Another pet peeve, cutting the clothing allowance. I know, I have an idea of why the clothing allowance was budgeted way back when. That was back in the days of the old ink mimeograph machines. My thoughts are, if you can leave this building dressed as you are and go into a decent restaurant, you do not need a clothing allowance. DPW people, yes. They get down and dirty. Police and fire, they have a clothing allowance through the department because they need to wear specialized equipment. I got no problem with that. But for the, the average person that works in this building, no. They don't need a clothing allowance. Restructure, restructure your entire ordinance fee schedule. Raise the fees, collect them, get more money. I am on a fixed income. I did not get a cost of living. I don't have a pension. I live on social security. I didn't get a cost of living increase. Anything that you people can bring into this building in the way of revenue is well, well thought of. I am comfortable with the budget for the most part. That makes me feel good. I, 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 I gotta try to read my notes now. Okay. Now, in conclusion, I only hope that the approval process tonight does not develop into either a political payback situation or a political stepping stone for some of yous. Like I said, I am comfortable with the budget. Not totally, but I can live with it. With that, I thank you. And I wish that you would listen to what some of us have to say. We're not total dorks. We know what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Going once, going twice?
Mayor Rivera.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry?
Please identify yourself. Please identify yourself.
Yes, I am going, I am going to do that. I want to greet Mayor Rivera, yourself, council president, council members. My name is Frank Reaganese. I live in North Andover. I was born in Lawrence, but for the past, since 1985, I've been a resident of North Andover. I am here tonight to speak for the people that can't speak. Memorial Day weekend is the time of year that dedicating, that we dedicate to honor and pay respect to our deceased veterans and also honor and respect our deceased family members and our friends. It is the time when we, we the living, place flowers and wreaths at grave sites and flags are placed at veteran grave sites as a way of showing that we care. I would like to know why the Bellevue Cemetery projects such a disgraceful appearance year after year, and the city of Lawrence fails to address this problem and actually compounds it by decreasing the budget every year. The mission statement of Bellevue Cemetery is, "It is our goal to provide professional care and service with respect and dignity, with respect and dignity, for all of our customers at the forefront of everything we do." for all of our customers at the forefront of everything we do." People purchase plots in Bellevue Cemetery and said fees included perpetual care. Instead, what people are faced with is knee-high grass, which when it finally is cut, becomes freshly cut hay and grass clippings piled up around gravestones. There is also the failure to empty barrels on a required basis. Sometimes there is so much trash, the overflow completely covers the barrel. I was at the cemetery this morning. I was there last week. The barrels haven't been picked up in all that time. Some are overflowing, some are filled to the top, and you have to stuff them down if you want to get anything in them. I am here tonight to ask why this deplorable condition exists year after year. Why are sometimes elderly people forced to clean around gravestones of loved ones to make them look presentable? Another question I have is, why are there so many military flags, broken by lawnmowers, destroyed, and then just left on the ground? And when I go up there and I see them, I take the time to pick them up and I dispose of them the way they're supposed to be disposed. The time has come to have the proper manpower available to have Bellevue Cemetery look dignified and remain that way throughout the year. I read this year's story in the May twenty-eighth Eagle Tribune that the Mayor Rivera shares everyone's dismay at the cemetery's condition. Now is the time to be a leader. Do something about it. Amend the Bellevue Cemetery budget and propose the necessary increase to permanently correct the annual disgrace. Convince the council of the necessity of amending the budget. Funding to additional half-time labor is not the fix for this problem. You need the proper workforce out there to make that cemetery look good the way it used to look years ago. I have worked with people the greater part of my life, and if Mayor Rivera would make himself available, I can discuss with him or suggest with him several ways to raise the money necessary to transform Bellevue Cemetery from looking disgraceful to looking respectable. In closing, please understand, I am not here to embarrass any individual, but I am hoping that this annual problem will be corrected. I ask the council to give some serious consideration to this request, amend the budget, and vote on an adequate amount to permanently fix this situation. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed.
Council president.
Council vice president, Michael Plant.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the FY two thousand seventeen budget.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Councilor vice president, Michael Plant.
Thank you very much, council president. Just as a reminder, we can't add any money to the budget. All we can do is potentially cut. But the way that I look at this budget is, I look at it through the viewpoint of, this is a blueprint for the direction that our city's going into. And one of the things that I like to see is, what are we doing about maintaining and growing the middle class? And I'm hearing a lot of talk about looking to reduce essential services. And when people are looking to reduce police, reduce fire department staff, that's not helping maintain the middle class. Middle class wants to see in our city, a safe city. They want to see a city where the parks look good. They want to see a city where our co-inspectors and other ISD inspectors are going out to make sure that places are safe, that rooming houses are run correctly, the automobile dealerships are appropriately managed in a safe way, a clean city. Middle class wants to make sure that, of course, our education is absolutely critical and that we've got a fantastic educational system. If we don't have a good educational system, our city's unsafe, our fire department is not able to appropriately address emergencies in a timely manner, you're gonna lose that middle class. Why would somebody or anybody who has the means want to stay in a city that's dirty, where the educational component is failing, where the police is, where there's crime? Where if they call nine-one-one and expect the fire department to show up in an amount of time to save their life and their property, and their property to those that are nearby and loved ones, they're not gonna want to stay here. They're just not. We need to have a budget, and I believe this budget is, a budget that goes in that direction to try to maintain the middle class in our city. It's not perfect. But to think that we can go ahead and to reduce it because some people think that our taxes are too high, let me remind you, that in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we have the average lowest tax bill. Let me repeat, in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts for homeowners, we have the lowest average tax bill. People are not gonna move out of the city because the taxes are too high. There's nowhere else for them to go. If they go someplace else, the taxes will be higher. What they want to see is, they want to make sure, and I'll repeat, that the services that we need to provide, whether it's education, whether it's quality of life issues, whether they contact somebody because the noise is too high, that there's a drug dealer down the street, whether they see some sort of suspicious activity that may regard a fire, that there is going to be city services that are gonna be present there to deal with these issues. And if you're a family that has children, you want to be able to send their children to a school that's gonna educate them and provide them the tools necessary to be able to be productive members of society so that they can be members of the middle class. Our housing stock is one that needs to be dealt with. We go around here in our city, we see dilapidated buildings, we see a lot of things that are not happening that we like to see happen. That causes an erosion of the middle class too. And that's why inspectional services is absolutely critical because they are the enforcement arm of our city to make sure that certain codes are met, whether it's overcrowding in buildings, whether it's structural repairs. Going ahead and starting to do cutting at any level at this point is a fool's errand and is counterproductive. So I just wanted to make that current facts known. And I also wanted to make this one last point, which is out of a two-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar budget, we receive the highest amount of state aid in the entire Commonwealth. We're not number two, we're not number three, we're number one when it comes to outside dollars coming in to offset our costs. Granted, most of those costs are going through the school department, and I get that. And very little of that is actually going on the city side. But I say, what are we doing to be self-reliant, self-sufficient? When the inevitable day comes, when the state finances start to go down again and we are left again saying, where's the money coming from, from the state, to bail us out? What I see happening in the police and the fire department is incremental gains, gains that make sense. We're starting to go in the right direction. And by the way, I think the number one component of government is to make sure our citizenry is safe. That's our number one, our number one, on the city side anyway, our number one priority. So I just wanted to make that open and common, council president. I do hope this committee, I hope that this council does pass this budget. I'm concerned about the talk about cuts. I'm concerned about the talks about jeopardizing what is truly important, some of the underpinnings. And I hope that we will move on forward and make two thousand seventeen a building block upon what we did in two thousand sixteen. Thank you.
Councilors, any further discussion? Seeing there's Councilor Madonado.
I really get upset, very upset, when I hear my fellow councillors talking about that we pay the lowest taxes in the state. But we don't talk about the fact that we have the lowest average salary in the state. We don't talk about the fact that we have the highest unemployment rate in the state of Massachusetts. When we talk about creating a budget for the middle class, where ninety-five percent of the citizens in this city of Lawrence are low-income, what are we doing? Are we preparing a budget and approving a budget for special interests? This budget does not reflect the interest of the taxpayer. It does not reflect the interest of the taxpayer. It reflects the interest of special groups within our city government, where many benefits are given to those special interest departments and then others are ignored totally. So when we talk about approving a budget for the middle class, let's remember, let's remember that this city, this city has the lowest average salary in the state of Massachusetts. That this city of Lawrence has the highest unemployment rate in the state of Massachusetts. So don't talk to me about middle class. Talk to me about the people that live here in the city of Lawrence. Talk to me about the harm and the damage that is gonna be placed and the burden that is gonna be placed on those individuals that barely can survive on an average salary of thirty-five thousand dollars. Talk to me about that. Don't talk to me about middle class. Talk to me about the reality that we live here in the city of Lawrence. The reality that ninety-five percent of the people that live in the city of Lawrence are low-income. Talk to me about that.
Thank you, Councilor Madonado. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor DePena.
No.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Abdu.
Yes.
Counselor Almonte.
No.
Counselor Madonado.
No.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez noted. Counselor vice, I'm sorry, council vice president, LaPlante, yes. Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm saying this to myself. Yes, noted and recorded. And council president.
Yes. Mr. Clerk.
Five yes, three no, one absent.
Counselor, no action has been taken, the vote, the...
Twenty-six.
In order to approve the budget, six votes are needed. In order to reject the budget, five votes are needed. Neither one has reached that threshold. Counselors, are there any further actions that you would like to take at this moment? Seeing there's none, can I please get a motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And it is the ayes having.